Thank you, Bonnie.
Now, we will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Honored God and his people with liberty and justice for all. This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed in the civic center of meeting room as required. We will be recording tonight's meeting, which will be posted on the city of Seward's website. Any citizen wishing to speak should message Greg Butcher. And when recognized, you shall state your name and address for the clerk's record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor by whom will determine any appropriate response shall be made. The city reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yep.
Beck.
Here.
Schmidt. Uh, I got media. Here, there we go. Coulterman.
Here.
Camprith.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Hendricks. And Hendricks is not present currently.
All right, we're good?
Yep.
Okay. First item this evening is the draft minutes for December first, 2020.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Singleton, second by Wilkin.
The motion is second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next item is the draft minutes of special meeting of December third, 2020.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Schmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Beck.
The motion is second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
All right, the next five item, the next five items make up our consent agenda for this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Singleton, second by Camprith.
The motion is second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Uh, the next item, we have confirmation of mayor appointments. We have the appointment of Brian W. Peters as Chief of Police.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Coulterman, was louder, so I'll go with that one. Sorry.
The motion is second?
I will note, Mayor, I will note that, uh, currently Assistant Chief Peters is in the room with me because he's keeping track of me. And so if anybody wants to hear any words from him or part of the discussion, please let me know. I can bring him up and move myself.
We'll just pass along our congratulations and excitement about him being in the new role.
And maybe it's time for a speech.
Come on.
Yay, there he is.
This Patton moment, Patton, come on.
I should hope this motion passes, or this is gonna be awkward.
He's talking about how cool the flag was behind him, so I could see myself. Uh, first of all, I want to say thanks, uh, to everybody for all your support, um, during my time as interim chief. Uh, it really made my job a lot easier, uh, as well as making the, uh, the transition to, uh, uh, as permanent, uh, chief, uh, it'll be a lot smoother. Can't thank you all enough and, uh, just pass along, uh, you know, if you ever need anything, don't hesitate to reach out. And, uh, I'm happy to be working with all of you. We've got a terrific department and, uh, uh, look forward, uh, as we move forward, uh, to keep things rolling. Do what we can to, uh, make sure this stays a, a great community for everybody and, uh, I think, uh, that's really about all I had. I apologize, I didn't have anything prepared. Like I said, next, next Christmas party we have after, uh, after a few drinks, I'll be happy to, uh, expound a little bit further.
Alright, thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you, AC. Soon to be not AC anymore, I can't call him that anymore. Somebody else get that nickname, maybe. We'll see, we're not gonna make any assumptions now to get down to it, Mayor. Anything else?
No, call the roll.
All right, Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright.
Congratulations.
Yep, congratulations. And tell them I'll see them in the morning. Item number two.
Somewhere along North Columbia, we'll be flashing lights.
Right, right. Uh, appoint, uh, the appointment of Lacy Cook to the Park and Recreation Board to replace Sandy Wright for a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Wilkin, second by Coulterman.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
The next appointment is, uh, also Lacy Cook to the Planning and Zoning Commission as the alternate to replace Mike Langer for a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Schmidt.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Alright, next we have a public hearing. This is a special use permit for six forty-seven Seward Street, uh, for allowing downtown street-level residential property. Uh, Tim, or Greg, would you like to take this one?
I got Tim online.
Alright, good.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, uh, Catch Investments wishes to convert the first floor at six forty-seven Seward Street to residential living in the rear half of that building for the purpose of renting it out. This is in the CBD, the Central Business District. Uh, in reviewing the, the current floor plan with Planning Commission last night, it, it meets all the criteria as far as, uh, fifty percent for the residential, uh, the fire separation. Uh, the residents would not be viewable from the storefront. The resident also would not be accessible from the storefront. Uh, we noted on here that the commercial frontage that one of the windows on the west side of that building would have to be converted to an egress door. Uh, fire code requires two exits in a commercial unit. And on, under the current floor plan, that is not met. Uh, Alyssa, uh, indicated that they are not willing to convert that window to a door. Uh, they want to come up with some other means of exit. And as a result, the Planning Commission voted to, uh, table this decision until the next meeting, until Alyssa could come up with a viable solution for the exit other than that window. Um, they're gonna give her an opportunity to amend this floor plan and see if they can come up with something. Them, the Fire Marshal can come up with some, uh, joint agreement for a second exit. But with that, they voted to, uh, as I said, table, uh, their recommendation until the next meeting.
I think for our purposes tonight, since this was a public hearing, is open the public hearing up to anybody that would want to speak to this item and then close out the public hearing. Um, and then the recommendation from administration would be to table this item as well until we receive a recommendation, one way or the other, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
Any comments from the public? Greg, do you have anyone in the queue?
Uh, if there's anybody in the comment or anybody on the call that would like to make a comment on this item, just let me know in the chat. Uh, send in your request to me and I can unmute you. Right now, we only have two people that aren't staff or SCCDP members, so.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council. Uh, you have any questions or comments for Tim?
The only question I have is, are, are you familiar with what type of exit that could be? I, I mean, do you have, was there specifics discussed?
With Hendricks, you mean?
Well, in the, in the here, in the hearing with planning and zoning.
Yeah, yeah, the, the fire code requires two exits and an exit consists of a door or, uh, uh, a hallway that is fire-rot uh, or a stairwell that meets code, something along that lines, but it would have to be two walkways of some kind.
In two different, in two different directions is basically.
Correct.
Okay.
Preferably as far apart from each other as possible. If one entrance is blocked, uh, due to fire or whatever the reason, they'd have another exit then.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that better, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments? They gave the recommendation. Go ahead.
Tim, are they considering on these, are they doing any sprinklers upstairs or are they considering sprinklers upstairs on these old buildings?
They, they've considered it, but cost is a big issue when it comes to sprinklers. And so they're going the route that they're meeting the fire code without the sprinkler. And it, it, with that being said, they'd still have to have two exits being a commercial building, even with sprinkler. The only thing sprinklers are gonna affect is occupancy loads. Uh, you can get a greater occupancy load with, uh, less egress.
It just concerns that, that, uh, Fire Marshal, you know, with the, you, the older style buildings like that, that they're not pushing for the sprinkler system.
I, I can't speak to that. I don't know what the Fire Marshal is pushing and is not pushing.
As long as we're meeting, as long as we're meeting city code, then we, there's nothing we can do, correct?
Correct, as long as they meet both city code and fire code, correct.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I think the recommendation would be to, uh, have a motion to table it tonight until we, um, give the Planning Commission opportunity to revisit this at a later date.
Move to table.
Table.
I have a motion by Camprith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Beck.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin. I'm gonna have to unmute him possibly, see if he unmutes himself.
Sorry, yes.
It's okay. Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yeah.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have administrative items. Uh, the first one is amended farm lease with, uh, Derek Kuma for a thirty-two point four-one acre tract of land near Plum Creek Trail in southwest quarter of section fifteen, township eleven, north range three east of the six PM. Uh, Seward County, Nebraska for crop year twenty twenty. Greg?
Uh, we have four farm leases, and so I'll cover them all kind of in one, uh, in front of you here. Derek Kuma is our tenant over by the Parade of Flags and also by, uh, right over the top of the Carol K. Project. And so Derek's kind of hung in with us with, during the Carol K. Project to re-divide up many a time over that property first in anticipation of the project and then ultimately with the fully and final developed project, cutting down on what his farm lease was. Um, and instead of ending stuff, his agreement was is to look to just equalize his, um, two leases he holds with us and then re-establish those acres once they were set. That's what he requested, rather than any sort of damages or anything like that. And he's been very, very good with work with through all of this stuff. Uh, flexible, communicates well a, and really does a good job of, of being a great tenant for us, uh, through all the thick and thin of trying to get this thing done. And so we have what will be the final amended one, once we knew what his final acres were for this year uh, and prices, and then just mirroring those for next year. I think there's a slight reduction again in the final numbers for, uh, the Carol K. One. And so I would note, Scrivener's error, we have a studious city attorney who noted, there is not a February twenty ninth in twenty twenty-two. Um, I don't know that that's in all of these. I think it's in the two later ones, uh, that we'll have that are for this upcoming crop year, but, uh, we'll note that that just needs to be adjusted to the twenty-eighth. So, other than that, I can answer any questions you have about any of the leases in general.
How do, how do we do that? Do we move forward with them each separately, Josh?
Yeah, we'll move them all separately. We'll just make sure that whoever moves the second two, uh, the final two, really, that they note that that'll be on the twenty. Well, let's make sure they're not at the twenty-ninth on all of them, so while I have them here. And Kelly, you can, oh, they are the twenty. So it's basically all of them, say the twenty-ninth for the term. So just note that the term, subject to the term ending on the twenty-eighth of twenty, of the upcoming years. Sorry. Kelly got me.
Any comments or questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, this one with the date a, as is in this one, is that right?
All of them to the twenty eighth.
Move the date to the twenty-eighth of February.
Yeah.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Schmidt.
If there's any further discussion, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, item number two, amended farm lease with Derek Kuma for twenty-nine point four-eight acre tract of land near the Parade of Flags in southeast quarter of section twenty-one, township eleven, north range three east of the six PM, Seward County, Nebraska for crop year twenty twenty. Any questions or entertain a motion? Move to approve with the date adjusted to February twenty eighth.
I'll second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Item three, farm lease with Derek Kuma for a thirty-two point four-one acre tract of land near Plum Creek Trail in southwest quarter of section fifteen, township eleven, north, range three east of the six PM, Seward County, Nebraska for crop year twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve with the date adjusted to February twenty eighth.
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Wilkin.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Item four, farm lease with Derek Kuma for a twenty-nine point four-eight acre tract of land near the Parade of Flags in southeast quarter of section twenty-one. Township eleven, north, range three east of the six PM, Seward County, Nebraska for crop year twenty twenty-one. Move to approve with date adjusted to February twenty eighth.
I'll second.
Moved by Schmidt, second by Coulterman.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Alright, next we have a resolution designating parking stalls along the north side of Jackson Street between Sixth and Seventh Streets as twenty-four-hour parking stalls. Greg?
Yeah, there's noted correction as the agenda went out. Uh, this one will be on the north side of Jackson. Again, this is what happens when Bonnie's gone for a week, man. I just go to a mess. She's gone longer than a week, so I'm glad to have her back. Uh, for some reason, I really wanted to adjust parking on Roberts for some reason, but it's Jackson. So the, the block north of what is O'Salon Hair Tricks and the municipal building, we received a request that a number of downtown tenants were parking on the south side of the street, which is currently unmarked parking. We do deem it public parking because it is in the right of way, but without being marked, it's basically twenty-four-hour parking. On the north side of the street, we have two-hour parking adjacent to Fast Mart. That two-hour parking, as we've had, uh, a community service officer fully available over the last, uh, given year, we've been enforcing parking again more regularly, and so that north side parking has basically been vacant. While people have been parking pretty regularly on the south side parking. And with the tenants parking there for up to twenty-four hours, it's making it hard for customers that are going into the storefronts there to get in and out, so we received this request. And our idea was to just make it twenty-four-hour parking, basically unsigned parking on the north side as well in hopes that the tenants would move over there, and that's where they could park. It's in the sun, it's a better spot in the winter to be parked anyways. Um, and so I did go around and speak with all property owners and business owners, uh, including Fast Mart. And everybody was in favor of it. They felt it would be a better option and, and probably free up the parking on the south side better. Uh, Fast Mart says their customers don't utilize that north side parking. They park either right in front of their building, on the side of their building by the air hose, or over their customer, or their employees sometimes park in the parking lot to the north. But they don't park usually on this, on the south side, uh, of their lot, of their block, thus the north side of the street. And so, uh, again, everybody on the block was in favor of it. I did speak with each one of them personally, so I can answer any questions you have.
I'll introduce the resolution. Okay, the resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-four. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So. Moved by Wilkin, who wants the second?
Second.
Second by Camprith. It's a race.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Item number six is also a resolution designating one handicapped or disabled parking space on the west side of Fifth Street, south of Main Street, Highway thirty-four. Greg?
As part of our kind of overall look at downtown, working with, um, some of the members of our community, uh, to better make parking and the pedestrian walkways and stuff more ADA accessible in downtown. One of the first main things that was identified was the ADA accessibility into the post office. Uh, publicly available building utilized a lot, very limited parking in the first place. Uh, and also note that they redid their steps and they're also their ADA ramp just this last year. And so in speaking with Kay, uh, at the post office, uh, and speaking with our citizens that were interested in taking a look at ADA accessibility in downtown and the diligent work of city engineer Mike Onaby and Planning and Zoning Director, uh, Tim Dwarack, they came up with together, everyone was kind of in agreement, to adjust that first parking stall. And Mike and Tim generated an awesome figure that attaches to the resolution, very detailed, has the exact measurements we need on it that outlines that that first stall would be converted to an ADA designated parking stall. Uh, it has plenty of clearance. We were looking at clearance for a ramp that would exit out the passenger side of a van or something like that. And so there's plenty of clearance on the sidewalk, the light post is more to the north. And so we think this is the best stall. Also, you try to use and utilize the closest stall to the ADA accessible entrance, which this would be the closest stall for that entrance, uh, which is located on the west side of the building. And so we kind of looked through all this and, and everybody went in and measured it out and double-checked it, and so uh, this is, this is the preferred route. We still have two, uh, parking stalls to the south of this available, so. They're not the best stalls, but they work. One's a little bit larger than the other one.
Any questions or comments from the council? I'll introduce the resolution. Alright, the resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-five. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Okay.
Moved by, I think Beck, second by Camprith.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Alright, next we have the city ministries report.
Um, nothing in particular winding down the year. We continue to watch, I know it's of interest. This will be our last meeting before you reconsider likely the, uh, face covering ordinance. Um, we continue to see hospitalizations and have done a bunch of other numbers continuing to trend down, which is a good thing. I did let, uh, Laura and Roger know today on the unified command call, uh, that we would like to have them prepared for whatever recommendations and data that they want to provide ahead of time leading up to that meeting so that you guys can make whatever decision, uh, you deem necessary based on the information we have at that time. So if there is something specific you want to see or anything like that, please let me know so I can pass that on to Roger or Laura. Um, but again, I think things, uh, they're trending in the right direction, so that's, that's good to see so far. Um, and the numbers we're looking at, one of the other big ones we're looking at is rollout of vaccinations. Uh, on the city side, that will really lean towards our EMS, uh, group will be included in the first round. They call it one A. Uh, and then we did receive notice today from the National Guard that most likely some of the essential personnel at the city, which will include police, um, and some utility workers, uh, will also be included in one B, and they've already started getting numbers for the one B group, and so that could be as early as January that, uh, the one B group might, uh, be up for vaccination. Uh, but obviously those, they're trying to collect that data now so they make sure they know they have a good count. And so working closely with, with, uh, the state on trying to get those numbers to them. Um, other than that, I can answer any questions you have.
Hey Greg, I want to come to that report for, you know, Four Corners. Is there any way when she comes that she could break down the numbers like Carl asked, uh, if we just break down for Seward, not the county?
I, I don't know, it's always been the trend in the past. Throughout this entire pandemic, that the health department has only released county-wide information. Now, I think Roger could possibly give you a better look at hospital information. You know, number of beds that have been occupied because they keep track of their COVID beds, but that's not going to have infections uh, and information like that. And so I can request and see how much they can break it down by, but it tends to be that the health department does not really, release specific information out to the general public, uh, other than county-wide information at the county level, so. But I will. specific information out to the general public, uh, other than countywide information at the county level. So, but I will ask. So any way we can get it broken down, we'll try to do so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Otherwise, we entertain a motion to accept his report.
Move to accept the report.
Second.
Moved by Camprith, second by Singleton.
Motion in a second, please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck. Schmidt.
Yes.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Camprith.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, uh, do we have any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? Seeing none. Uh, then we have Jonathan or Zane, someone like to, uh, tell us what's coming, coming up in our community?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Santa Claus is coming to town at his house in historic downtown sewer next to the courthouse. He's ready to receive children's gift requests and letters. All visits will be contactless in order to keep Santa healthy for his big day. Masks are encouraged for visitors and plexiglass separates children and Santa. The final dates to visit are on Thursday, December seventeenth from sixty PM, Saturday, December nineteenth from three to five PM, and Sunday, December twentieth from one to three PM. Um, our office has been positively overwhelmed by the record amount of chamber bucks that are being purchased this year by local citizens, businesses and organizations. Uh, many are using chamber bucks to serve as Christmas gifts, holiday bonuses, and ways to say thanks to those who have served, uh, your families throughout the year, including teachers, healthcare workers, mail carriers, pastors, and many others. Chamber bucks are a great way to support local businesses. If you have any questions about how the chamber bucks program works, please call our office. Um, also wanted to share, we're reminding everyone to please remember to shop small all season long. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, wanted to share a reminder to, don't forget to continue participating in the Stay Open, Stay Healthy marketing campaign in partnership with Memorial Healthcare Systems. You can like and share the video, grab the social messaging to make it your own and pick up a Stay Open, Stay Healthy window cling from the civic center to display your support for the campaign. Any questions on how to engage, feel free to call our office and thanks for your continued support to help us all stay open and stay healthy. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Singleton, second by Wilkin.
Please call the roll.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Schmidt. He is a, he's a yes. Uh, Coulterman.
Yes.
Miller or Camprith?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, with that, thank you all. Have a great night and be safe.
Thank you.